Okay, letter 2016 dash zero over two. And letters of the town council, town of Whitestown, Indiana, and the Department of State of Defense, with respect to the structure of what we're having in place here. That's for three.
Sure. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to...
Can we talk about that? We don't have to do that here.
Sure.
So just, I wanna, I've been, I've heard from some people that they're concerned about this ordinance, and...
I can't hear you speaking from the microphone. Now be able to open my speaker.
I, I've spoken to some people and they've expressed concern about this ordinance and having a town council representative automatically be the president. So I was thinking we should discuss those concerns with...
Why didn't any of those people show up tonight and discuss those concerns? Or, I'm confused.
So...
Oh, whoa, hold up.
There's some people here that, I don't know if they're gonna go to these people or not, but they share with me their concerns, so I was thinking...
It has traditionally been a town council representative, this has been a question from the establishment, in fact, quite often I thought it was in the...
This isn't...
The town council, and the council representative.
Right, I understand it's been that way for, since the inception of the commission, and this year is the first year that somebody else was elected president outside of the town council representative.
And, and we actually asked, as the council cabinet asked the police board if they would withhold having the first meeting until after this meeting, that they were making appointments, and they felt that they didn't need to do that, that's a little concerning.
Well, although the board is independent, the board still still has to concede general wishes of the council. We are the executive committee, five of us must have made the decision for the town. And when boards decide that what the council wants is not the board's, then that's a little concern, to be concerned with.
Yeah, I think we should also, this has to be to other people as well. I understand we're at the final decision, but I'd like to get in and opinions and understanding the entire situation before we make decisions. This was new to me, and I just wanted to ask those questions.
This is for three. This, yeah, this is for three, and we're only on for three tonight, so there's not much time for further discussion. Yes, we always got more to the mic than...
Hello, sir. Thank you. My name is John Nixon, and I am the current president right now of the police commission. If it's appropriate, I don't know if you guys had any questions, but not as to what, what this occurred, you and I had a conversation, President Miller, in regard, and I was trying to see if we could discuss some of these issues and make them a result. But if you have any questions or like clarification as to why that meeting took place this past month, I'd be happy to answer those.
No, I have no question.
If you have, if you have comments to provide, or what we're doing, but this isn't a back in form.
Right, and I'm just trying to do clarification. And we had two months' worth of meeting minutes, and that would have been postponed to three months, which the meeting currently lasted, I think it lasted around two hours, and it would have even gone longer, so we chose to go ahead forward with the meeting. And everybody who's there, I think with the exception of Mike Martin, I believe was the only representative that was not there, the attorneys and everyone else, and so the election went forward. I find it interesting, since the result didn't come out the way that certain individuals felt it should, that all of a sudden, six days, seven days later, this ordinance appears.
This ordinance has been working for quite some time.
Just to make one comment, the town council, which seems to have long agendas, and what we did was we held a meeting on the 7th of Thursday. And that way we would have had a better election. But clearly, to me, it appeared that you might have held your elections because you weren't happy with the...
And correct.
And sir, with all due respect, that that meeting moved forward, and you had stated that Kevin Russell knew the information, that that was not conveyed to the, to the police commission. The only thing that was conveyed to the police commission was that he was trying to get a hold of Amanda to cancel the meeting.
Actually, I mean, I need to dispute that. Two emails sent out, and with two separate emails sent out, after this question, why the meeting could be delayed. Both of those explained reasons why.
Okay, sir, with all due respect...
And apparently he did not read the email, because he went to all the committees and to chief.
Sir, with all due respect, I was not...
Well, Captain Russell said he notified you, said that he did, right?
Like we can get into all that.
Somebody has not told us...
A lot of news to clarify, and I think that the police commission, everybody...
Council, I will send you both emails.
Okay, I think, I think we're, we're done with this discussion. Okay, well, there's, uh, council...
But I just wanted to make sure that we do listen to all the concern that everybody who makes these types of decisions, so we do, I think, is all I can ask.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Nixon. All right, moving on to resolutions 2016 dash zero, letter C.
Town of Whitestown, Indiana, resolution 2016 oh one, resolution urging the Indiana General Assembly to review compensation for part-time officials under Indiana Code thirty-six dash five dash three dash two. Whereas the town council is a legislative and municipal body of the town of Whitestown, and whereas the Whitestown clerk treasurer is a separately elected official with certain duties and statutory obligations, and whereas the town council has previously provided for a full-time salary for its elected clerk treasurer inconsistent with that compensation, the office is served in a full-time capacity and, whereas in two thousand fifteen, the Whitestown clerk treasurer took a full-time job in another county during Whitestown's regular business hours, and stopped working in a full-time capacity as clerk treasurer while still taking full-time compensation from the town. And whereas the Whitestown community is approved of paying full-time compensation to a part-time official, and whereas the Indiana Code thirty-six dash five dash three dash two generally imposes restrictions on a town's ability to reduce the compensation of an elected town officer, and whereas the Whitestown community and the town council are not opposed to maintaining an appropriate level of compensation for a full-time official, but do not believe that the intent of the statute was for public funds to be used to pay for, pay full-time compensation in part-time official, and whereas the Whitestown community and town council do not desire to pay public funds for an official's salary while the official instead works a separate job. And whereas this statute should be clarified to affirm that towns may set separate compensation depending on whether an official acts in a full-time or part-time capacity, to ensure that officials do not accept full-time public compensation and then instead work a separate job. Now therefore be resolved, the town council, the town of Whitestown, hereby urges the Indiana General Assembly to assign review, Indiana Code thirty-six dash five dash three dash two, to an interim study committee, and consider clarifying this statute to ensure that towns may establish separate compensations for part-time or full-time clerk treasures or elected officials, and accordingly pay a lower compensation if an official acts in a part-time capacity. Passed in a document by the Whitestown Indiana Town Council. I make a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand sixteen oh one.
I would second.
All right, we made a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Well, moving on to letter D, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero two. I would move that we adopt resolution twenty sixteen dash zero two, a resolution encouraging town staff to publish notice of vacancies for office or for acre and judge.
Second.
All right, we had a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion?
So is this the judge for the clerk treasurer and judge, or is it, can it also, or should it also include any town jobs?
No, I mean, these are the two that were statutorily obligated to fill right now, so I don't, I don't understand why the other jobs would be a part of it.
I'm just asking, 'cause I know we, we hired people, town employees, I'm just wondering if we should tell those vacancies for...
I think we leave, we leave those up to the town manager, the sort of CEO, these we are statutorily obligated to be involved, so that's the reason for us getting involved and urging the town manager to do this.
There is specific timelines on these, and state of the request, I can elaborate with the cabinet. Could you send out an email to all council members...
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss that at the end of the video.
No, mine, I take that back.
All right, any other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed say no. Resolution adopted, five to zero. All right, uh, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero three. Seven, like three.
Town of Whitestown, Indiana, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero three, a resolution urging the Indiana General Assembly to adopt House Bill eleven ninety-one regarding rural food and beverage taxes.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh three.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed say no. Resolution adopted, five to zero. All right, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero four.
Resolution twenty sixteen dash oh four, a resolution urging the Indiana General Assembly to adopt House Bill eleven eighteen regarding alcohol coverage permits and redevelopment.
I make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh four.
I second.
All right, we got a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed say no. Resolution adopted, five to zero. All right, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero five.
Town of Whitestown, Indiana, resolution two thousand sixteen zero five, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. proclamation. Whereas January fifteenth nineteen thirty-nine was the birthday of a great American, the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who gave his life for love of peace and justice. And whereas federal and state legislation have recognized Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders, by adopting his birthday as a national event and holiday in this country. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our community, and whereas the Whitestown Town Council encourages everyone to join us as we remember Dr. King's legacy in cooperation between all segments of our first community, and now therefore be resolved that the Whitestown Town Council hereby designates and proclaims Monday, January eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the town of Whitestown. For all Whitestown residents to take part in observance and celebrate the life of Dr. King.
Second. We got a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion?
Yes, we have some things on the agenda for Monday, can you help with that?
We do, for the first time, we're gonna use our state-of-the-art video system in the gym to show this, the, I have a green speech, I believe that starts at ten, I know Tanya has all the marketing material out. One of our residents has stepped up as well, Keisha Rollins, she has a lot of passion and energy for these things, and she's gonna help out as well. So we urge, I think, I'm not sure if Lebanon Community Schools is off that day, I know Zize Community Schools is off, uh, for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, uh, town staff, the town offices are closed, uh, that's one of our recognized holidays. So I urge any of the students especially to come and join us, uh, to watch the speech, uh, and then we'll do some other trivia contests about Dr. King's life and other items. I think it'll be fun, good day.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed say no. Resolution adopted, five to zero. Okay, moving on to resolution twenty sixteen dash zero six.
Resolution twenty sixteen dash zero six, a resolution concerning transition of the office of Whitestown clerk treasurer. Whereas, the Whitestown clerk treasurer submitted her official resignation to become county clerk on January sixth, twenty sixteen, and whereas the Whitestown clerk treasurer stated in her official resignation letter that her last day of employment as clerk treasurer through February twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen. And whereas Ms. Andrews provided fifty-three days' advance notice of her last day to hold the office of Whitestown clerk treasurer, and whereas the fifty-three-day advance notice provides adequate time for Ms. Andrews to develop and submit a thorough transition plan as outlined below to assist the Whitestown Town Council in transitioning to an interim and or new permanent clerk treasurer, and whereas if the clerk treasurer's replacement is not chosen before February twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, the deputy clerk treasurer, or if unavailable or unwilling, a temporary for team by the town council president will assume the duties of the office clerk treasurer until the permanent clerk treasurer is appointed by the Whitestown Town Council, and whereas the Whitestown Town Council desires to transition smoothly for Ms. Andrews to the newly appointed clerk treasurer, who will be chosen by majority vote of the Whitestown Town Council prior to March twenty-seven, twenty sixteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Whitestown Town Council requests that Ms. Andrews provide the information below to the Whitestown Town Council via email by five P M. on February eighth, twenty sixteen. One, a transition plan should contain the following acronym. A, highlight specific tasks and initiatives that a successor must be prepared to administer. B, include key transition activities along with an explanation and the date defined which the activity needs to be completed. C, a list of contacts and relationships. D, a list of description of the position, whereable's, status of working, progress, and projects yet to be commenced. E, a list of lessons learned, of our treasurer. F, an explanation of processes that are pertinent to the position. Two, a list of the records and property that will need to be transferred to the clerk treasurer's successor by February twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen. Three, a list of all of sixty entities, vendors, or username and passwords that will need to be given to the clerk treasurer's successor and changed as a result of the transition. Please provide all relevant information such as web addresses, phone number, emails, et cetera.
I make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh six.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion?
I would like to amend this resolution to add item G number one, to include detective clerk job instructions that we have there.
Good.
On A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y,
Alright, my, my appointment will be Jacob Kraft, and he's here with us today. Thanks for coming. Congratulations.
I'll second that for you.
Alright, moving on to, uh, number three, the Police Commission.
I would make a motion that we appoint Mike Roberts to the Police Commission.
I'll second that. We've got a motion, uh, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
I would make a motion for the second member that we appoint Mike Roberts to the Police Commission. He is currently serving as well on the Plan Commission.
I'll second that. We've got a motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
And just a quick question is, does the current Police Commission members, uh, you, Neil, and John, and then you're just adding these two?
No, this will be replacing Neil's all.
Okay, so I...
Hold on.
The thought is that it's time that we move to the civilian Police Commission, which is more public safety. Now, it's good to have one police officer, and my thought is a police officer can give the Police Commission good insight. And he has given good insight in the past as to what the thoughts are across police. But other than that, it's time that we move to the civilian Police Commission.
Yeah, because Neil, in my thoughts, has reached out to me and shared that he wishes to stay on the commission. So...
Talk again.
Neil Sullivan has reached out to me personally and asked that we keep him on the Police Commission.
He has public safety, um, movement to, I, I truly do want to move to civilian Police Commission. It's passed most towns and villages.
So it's...
Did you finish your motion?
Okay.
Did you finish it?
I finished it.
Okay, so you made the appointment, the appoint Mike Roberts, and it's been seconded. Uh, so, so, I mean, obviously, we don't support reappointing the, to the, to the Police Commission. It, it's not a lifetime appointment, uh, and I think some people expect it to be. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Alright, motion adopted. Four to one. Okay, next up is the Board of Zonian Fields. And, uh, that's a council president appointment, and the appointee will be Brian McKee. EDC, uh, which was next on the list, for, it's going to be the next one. Parks, uh, the council president appointment, and that would be Kathy O'Chane. Who is currently a park president. Okay, the RDA appointments were listed on there, but they're not needed at this time. Uh, members of that board are me, Gavin Russell, and Julie Whitman. Uh, I think Julie had since resigned, but she hasn't, so I had a letter of resignation here. Uh, Fire Board, there's actually nothing to add on. Human Relations are council president appointments, and I'm gonna make three appointments tonight, and we'll come back to the others. The three appointments are Scott Shelley, Keisha Rollins, and Gavin Placemurray. And Russell wants to play on the story for everybody. So we'll move on to Letter...
Council President, I hope, I got the new meetings, this is a new meeting for us. But they take an active role in, uh, the diversity of this town, promoting diversity of this town.
On the, uh, Human Relations Commission, uh, this is originally invited by the council president with the approval of the Town Council.
Okay, so, so I will, I will make a motion to appoint, uh, Scott Shelley, Keisha Rollins, Gavin, and Gavin Placemurray, uh, to the Human Relations Committee.
I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted. Five to zero. Alright, moving on to Letter J, consideration of adding the general election holiday, Letter A, holiday. Alright, I'll start off, but I personally think this is a good idea, particularly the elections being held here at the town hall in the future. It's just doing for our employees, not to be here and, uh, put, to put them in an odd situation. Uh, with, with voters being here, potentially, you know, town council members, uh, out there, you know, running for election, and just makes for an awkward situation.
Dax, do you have anything we can add? No.
I talked to Chief Wester, I've not talked to you, and I don't think this affects, you know, Chief, does this affect you? Chief? That's right. Um, does this affect, I talked to you, we came to the conclusion it doesn't really have negative impacts. Does it have a negative impact on your budget for, for any reason?
Yes, it should not.
So I, it's pretty straightforward.
I would just like that go, Mr. President, your comments, I mean, it's right forward. I'm glad we moved forward, especially as the county has saw. Correctly utilizing this new facility as a vote center to make it easier on not just our residents, but also those neighbors that have around us to vote here as often as they can.
I would entertain a motion.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Alright, so we've got a motion to, uh, make the general election day be paid holiday for town hall. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted.
Mr. President, I would, um, like for us to also remind all employees that since we are a, a pre-election, we have voting centers here, that we also make sure that we, we, uh, make sure we're not in the facility to influence any voting or any voters when they are here, as we're open so that our staff is standing out of that area.
That only affected us on one day during this reelection now, whether the presidential gubernatorial branch or it could, so there could be more days ahead.
Alright, we'll move on to Letter K, the town street naming procedure that...
Well, there's a couple of streets that we identified recently that can use a new name, and because of that, I wanted to present the council, but new members of the council are with the procedure that we have in place for naming the street. You can see on the procedure applies, it potentially applies as a council president. Um, but there's so much more that could go into the naming of the streets. Uh, some of those that will come up, uh, that we think needed a number one, we don't want. As we grow as a town, we have the county road number, it's time to change those. Um, that, that's, that's for all county roads. So County 700 East and the Graves, if all will have very much of it in our jurisdiction. Uh, it's right here, it's one address, it's one business address on County 700 East, and it happens to be us. I don't think we're going to oppose it. Um, I think we can get our address changed. Same with Perry Worth, uh, Perry Worth is a designation of a line between two townships. Um, we think it could use a more modern type name, that's a staff, and I'd say the... It also has, actually, I think it has considering addresses, uh, that face that are on Perry Worth. Weaver is on four, Weaver's on 450, there's no address on Perry Worth. Parks, who's on Perry Worth?
Humane Society.
The Humane Society, we can count it on Perry Worth. Yes, you're correct. Of course, I don't know if we go back beyond to the Collins Act, I think it was stop, stop sign. But, yes, two businesses on Perry Worth, my apologies. Anyway, Perry Worth, we have another, um, and then there's this access road right here, which we just built and has a lot more, uh, traffic than we had imagined. So, it's, it's actually working, just keeping people off the park. So, that's another potential new name. And then the Southwest Business District Access Road, which I knew for the last, because it's probably the most important and we probably need a name for it right now. Um, and the reason why I say that is, as the median starts to be built, we have agreements in place with the Circle K and schoolers, that before the median got built, the access road had been built and opened. Uh, that access road is that road that we just built, the connection, the new Perry Worth is the first roundabout. So as we start to tear up the parkway, but a median, which is going to affect the ability to turn, if you're going east, turn left into the Circle K. And if you're leaving Circle K, you won't be able to, to leave it and turn left to go east again. Uh, our agreement's already placed to have that access road available for interest and interest points to the Circle K property. So, that road needs to be named, so that we can open that road, and so that we can do everything we need to do to speed on the side, stop signs, everything else on that road.
Alright, are there any, any questions? Alright, if not, we'll move on to Letter L, the Annual Engagement Letter for Refinancing.
We need to add, we need to change. Steve, reviewed it.
As he should.
And how did that change the thing? An omission from the agreement.
Well, I, I mean, we, the council wants to do it, I would recommend on Attachment A, Page 2, that you approve it with deleting everything from no unit and consequential damages through, so delete that paragraph, limit liability paragraph, and indemnification for third-party claims, the no transfer assignment claims clause, and then time limit on claims clauses. I, I would recommend that it be deleted. Uh, after reviewing it, I would say it's consistent with, Stan and I had a conversation a couple of years ago. He wanted to put some stuff in his contract, and against my, my recommendation, he pulled it out. So, that's consistent with, I think, the way that your other agreements are. So, i- if, if you would want to approve it, that would be my recommendation along with execution of the uniform service agreement.
I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we allow to ask the tax office to sign this letter with the amendments that the attorney has suggested.
I'll second.
Alright, we've got a motion and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions that I may... I repeated it myself, there's no, it says anybody can get out of the contract and buy any one. There's no penalties. Is there? I didn't see anything about penalties.
Um, no, like, uh, what kind of...
Financial penalty.
For canceling, I mean, it's, it's basically a, an outflow treaty. So, you, you would have the right to not use refund control or terminate them at any time. And they would have the right to stop, you know, stop doing work for, for Whitestown at any time.
So there's no penalty?
The, the, essentially what we have there was, they, they limited their liability. There was several provisions that were intended to limit their liability, and that's what I suggested that you have. So, the, the, the penalty, the penalty to be, uh, for any damage that they caused.
Okay, um, I have another question. I, I don't see last year's contract, so I was curious what the hourly rates are and what all the costs are versus last year. Just so I can understand how much it went out.
I, I, I don't really use that, I don't know that, that, did we have a contract with them last year? We did, I think, I'm pretty sure we did. I'll, I'll dig it up.
I'm just curious, so you're...
I don't think it was an increase.
Okay. And then the, the last question, I was just wondering if we've ever bid it out another town?
That's a part of your county workshop, it's something in the agenda.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion adopted. Five to zero. Alright, Letter B, uh, consider approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Census Bureau to give out a special census. And I would entertain a motion.
Uh, move to have Dax Gordon, or you?
Which doesn't need to be one, I can't remember.
Either Council President Eric Moore or Dax Gordon instead to sign letter with the Census Bureau for purposes of special census, listed in the paper.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion's adopted. Five to zero. And I am going to recuse myself from, uh, Letter B, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Austin.
This is regarding going after grant funding.
So, so...
This is going after grant funding for the Community Wide Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. If there's a, for grant funding, um, the town will be dedicated, local dollar, or dollar magic, $20,000 if this project is chosen. And so I would make a motion that we, uh, approve the application of the Pedestrian Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan.